And let me read my little blurb. Under Government Code Section 54954, members of the public have the right to address the Governing Board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments in the public pertain to a specific district employee, the Board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, which is our next our next section. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. So we're going to hear public comment, non-agendized items, and then we'll move to public comment on the on what's on the agenda. So please be specific when you put your name, first and last name, and your topic in the chat. The Board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully, take notes, and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. The chat will be open for two minutes. Please, again, please include your full name and topic.
So we are, we'll open up the chat box right now. If you, again, if you have a public comment that you wish to make, please include your name and please include a specific topic that you'll be speaking to.
All these comments seem to be about the agenda item.
Okay, I think we can close our public comment section, Ashley. And we will move into both of these items are related to, they can, so they can just be taken one right after the other, and they're entitled to the full four minutes each. We're going to be using a timer, and so you'll see a timer that'll show up on the, on the the image.
Camden, was she? Camden, are you there? He wrote me a really great email.
One moment, we're just trying to get him up here.
Is he there, Ashley?
Hi.
There he is.
Um, so I would like to speak about school, school reopenings in the PCS school district. COVID-19 is not going away. It is now thought that it will become the seasonal virus, much like the flu. There may be seasonal vaccine available in the future, but is unknown if we will ever have a vaccine that will predict indefinitely, like some of our other required vaccines. With no end in sight, what measures can we put into place to safely reopen schools, much like the safety precautions encouraged during flu season? How long are we prepared to keep students from onsite learning? Sonoma County has been in the purple tier one for the entire last eight months. Are we willing to keep kids out of school for another three, six months, three to six months, or even a year? The Lancet Journal produced by a study from China found that only 17% of household members living with a COVID person also acquired the disease. That means that 83% of people did not become infected, even when living in the same house, touching the same surfaces, and being unmasked around a COVID persons. We also know that a standard face mask decreases transmission by 75%. This means in a worst-case scenario, there's a 25% residual chance that we might still get COVID in the community wearing masks. Taken directly from the Sonoma County Public Health Statistics on October 31st, we've calculated the potential for a student or staff member at Kennerworth would contract COVID-19 from exposure at school. At Kennerworth, we have approximately 1,300 students and staff. The current Sonoma County case count at around 1.9% of the population having COVID. That would mean that 26 students and staff might be positive at the school. In the worst-case scenario, 26 Kennerworth students and staff multiplied by the 17% rate of infection in unmasked transition, again, multiplied by the 25% residual transmission not captured by masking, will give us a 0.00085 infection rate. This means 8.5 out of 10,000 people would contract COVID-19 in a public setting such as a school. Using the law of ratios, this means 1.1 students and staff can contract COVID from attending in-person classes if we did nothing except wearing masks. This doesn't mean that we shouldn't take additional precautions to protect students and staff. We know that masking is one of the most effective measures for preventing the spread of the disease, and for every safety measure we put in place, we decrease the risk even further. Additional precautions that come up with are social distancing, hand hygiene, and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfecting, and contact tracing. Well, we need to consider what to do if someone does have symptoms or test positive. This does not mean a complete shutdown of the school. Again, with mask compliance and proper contact tracing with low-risk exposure to symptomatic COVID-positive students should be able to remain at school as long as they remain symptom-free. To encourage students to be honest about symptoms, we should also offer Zoom classes while they're at home recovery. This would also be an option for students and parents who weren't comfortable sending students in-person to school yet. I think there are options to safely return to school and respect people's decisions to stay at home until the pandemic impacts lessons for the community. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts and solutions with you this afternoon.
Thank you, Camden. That was great. Say hi to your mom for me. Linda, Linda, you're next. Linda, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to everybody today. I'm also commenting on returning to school safely. One of the things that has been shown in studies to be important in minimizing the transmission of COVID in settings such as schools is to have stable cohorts of students and teachers. So what that means is that you have numbers of students that are specific to a teacher, and they don't mix with other groups. And while that's, you know, fairly easily done at the grammar schools, where that's generally what they have at the junior highs and high schools, if we continue to try to hold classes in the traditional way where students rotate between teachers, that does not give us stable cohorts. So I was hoping that we could hear what the Board is thinking as far as how to create stable cohorts. One option that I have heard circulated in other schools is to have students assigned to a specific teacher, and they stay with that one teacher, but they may have their classes with their other teachers via Zoom. So in other words, the classroom they're in is like a homeroom where they go to get their classes. So it's essentially similar to what their students are already doing with distance learning, but they are getting the benefit of being on campus and having some social interaction with a teacher and other students as one possibility. So again, I just wanted to hear what the Board and committee was thinking as far as trying to create stable cohorts, because the last meetings we were hearing from, it sounded like we were trying to adhere to kind of a traditional form where you still had students and teachers rotating around. So I would like to hear that addressed. And then finally, I'll finish with wanting to make sure that we are, as always, keeping equity in mind when thinking about school reopening and making sure that we are acknowledging that COVID disproportionately affects some certain students more so than others. And so making sure that we are taking the concerns of those families into consideration when designing a return-to-school plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Linda. That was great. Okay, so we are on to school reopening options and related next steps. I would like to hear about the social, the idea of having some sort of social and secondary schedules and special ed.
Okay, I think we'll probably cover all that as part of a, as going through a process. So what, let me go ahead and share my screen. It's not what I wanted to share, maybe later. So I think that, and I'll kind of go through the whole, all of this, and then we can kind of take it piece by piece. I think there's three important decisions that need to be made, and that's part of what we need to discuss today. One is, one of the decisions is, as we began to plan for a return to in-school instruction, will our return be phased in, or will it be an all-programmers-at-once approach? So we need to know that. If the decision to, is to develop a phased-in approach, you know, what would each step look like? We need to determine what those steps are. Again, it's not about when we're returning, but when we, when we make that decision to return, what's the first step, what's the second step, and so on, if it's a phased-in approach. The third item is about triggers and metrics. So what metrics will we use to determine movement from one phase to the next? So let me give you an example. Back to the three decisions. If the decision is, a lot of the discussions have been around a phased-in approach. I don't want to make presumptions on that, but if it was a phased-in approach. Come on now. Let's try it one more time. Here are some potential scenarios. So in the, in the first scenario, because one of the things that's been discussed is at, in committee meetings, and Sheldon, I highlighted in just late, at some point, probably in the study session, he can go over some of the data that he was able to put together from our ad hoc committee. But there's been a lot of discussion about, should we consider getting our students back to school in some way, shape, or form, whether that be for extracurricular or co-curricular activities? There's also been some discussion about providing some additional distance learning support for schools at the school site. We're right now planning to open up for the secondary levels and kind of expanding from there. That would be the least invasive. So each scenario moves closer to, to full-in-school instruction. In the second scenario, it would be the first scenario, and students with the greatest independent learning challenges. And at all of our committee meetings and also at our board meetings, I think we've, we've made it fairly clear that our biggest concern as far as students with the greatest independent learning challenges would be our, our youngest children that come to school, as well as our special ed students. So our youngest TK through threes would be going back in, in that model into a hybrid. And then special ed students, we're looking specifically at those moderate to severe learners, our preschool students, our full inclusion students, and our special day class students. Those group of students. Yep, Ellen.
Gary, I think we need to, in these scenarios, include English language learners with, well, I guess greatest independent learning challenges would be independent, would be ELS, but I just, you know, we know that that's a huge issue.
Yeah, and you know, we can certainly add it. Again, this is just some scenarios that, what needs to be filled in on this could, could be modified one way or the other. But identifying, identifying those now, at, at some point, when the, when the Board's ready to, I want to go through everything else, but Molly and Melinda can share some more specific information regarding the special ed students. As you recall, special education is one of the few groups that specifically is spelled out in the Sonoma County guidance under purple. And in that particular guidance, it states under the purple tier that counties that are in the purple tier are permitted to offer in-person instruction and services to small cohorts of students with special needs. And that could include English learners. Primarily, people are looking at their special ed students, as well as, it could include homeless youth, foster youth. And the determination is that students with disabilities, though, should be prioritized in that.
Okay.
A third scenario includes the first two scenarios and then adds a intermediate grades, grades four through six, elementary, it adds alternative education, and it potentially adds something like career technical education, like a course.
Are the, is the four through six cohort starting? Have they started?
Well, we have four through six cohorts that are starting back here under distance learning support.
Right. Have they started?
Actually, students coming back to school.
Okay.
These, in these, in this scenario two, and in scenario three, students are coming back. And in this case, scenario two, it's TK through three, it's these special ed groups. And in scenario three, it's, in addition to that, it's grades four through six, alt-ed, career technical ed. That could be a scenario. And then lastly would be a scenario four, where it's scenarios one, two, and three, and it would include then grade seven through 12 in some type of a hybrid. And that particular hybrid piece, the direction that the Board gave was for the committee to go back and look at ways to reduce the number of cohorts in, in a, in any type of seven, 12 hybrid. So they're currently going to be going back to do that, but there won't be any specific information related to that. But if there was specific direction, even more specific about how many cohorts per group, we said less than three or less cohorts. And so that was the model that they were going to go back and, and look at. So in that, once a phase, we, we have to have some element of a phase decided. That doesn't mean when it's, when it's going to start, but what did that look like? It could be a two-step phase, it could be a three-step, five-step, six-step, whatever. But we need to have a model so that we can start planning for that. The third piece is related to metrics. What metrics are we going to use to determine when do you move from, when do you move from one scenario to the next? Whatever those scenarios are, and so those potential metrics are, could be movement from purple tier to red tier. Now, if we move from the purple tier to the red tier, we have to spend at least two weeks in the red tier to even consider anything at the, at grade seven through 12. And a red tier movement means county positivity rates that are less than 8%. So between four to seven cases per 100,000 residents. It could be a scenario where it's, where it's red tier plus four weeks. It could be red tier plus six weeks, could be red tier plus, and beyond that, whatever the comfort level is moving forward. Another metric to look at would be COVID positivity rates from our distance learning groups that we have coming back right now, and that will be coming back for secondary support. A fourth area could be COVID positivity rates in our local school districts that have come back. And then the last two metrics, and we do have a little bit of information on that, we can talk about two, and that's why it's highlighted, is certainly the Board wants to know student grades and performance, because you have to balance out, you know, the impact of any decision with the health impact. And then finally, what, what's, what's the student, what's student social emotional data do we have? And that is another piece related to, obviously, their health and wellness. And so going back to the, the initial question set, we really need to know first whether, whether we're going to, whether, when we return, are we planning for an all-in approach or a phased-in approach? And then if it's a phased-in approach, then we, we should talk about steps, just like Ellen did, about English learners, where do they fit? And is it three steps? Is it two steps? Because again, it's, it's not about, we have to look at this about first at, not when are we returning, but when we return, what will it look like? So we can build that. That's exactly what we did with, with our, our distance learning. We determined what will distance learning look like first, not when we were going to. That Board didn't make that decision until, till towards the end of the summer. Committees were working on developing out the distance learning piece. And then, of course, the last, the third piece, which would be, well, what triggers are going to move us from one, one approach to the next? How do we move from one phase to the next? Which, what do you want, what does the Board want to prioritize?
I have a quick question. While we're in purple tier, we can do, we can do the special ed, right, cohorts? And can we do the extracurricular, co-curricular, social, emotional piece where we have, you know, a club meeting or lab day for science classes or whatever? Can we do that while we're still in purple?
What we could do is we could identify potential areas. We could develop a plan. We could take the plan to Sonoma County Office, to the Department of Health, and we could seek for approval of a plan that met the health and safety criteria guidance, but there would be steps related that we would need to do. We couldn't just automatically do that. It would have to be a pretty thought, thought, thought-out plan on how we would do that.
For special ed and social emotional, or just the social emotional?
Just, this, just the, the social emotional. Not special ed. Special ed did not require approval. We would need to be able to have a small cohort. We'd have to be able to keep pure cohorts in place. There are certain rules behind that, that we'd follow the same rules, very similar to rules to what we do right now with our other cohorts.
Thank you.
Any just general questions on that? So maybe what we could do is we could move into, talk a little bit about, let's start with maybe the extracurricular and co-curricular. Let me pull that up, and Sheldon, I don't know if you want to speak to this?
Yeah, sure.
I'll kind of, I'll manage it for you, and just let me know.
Okay, so this, this is the raw data, Gary. Do you have the file where I tried to?
Yeah, I do. Hold on a second. I don't know why I got that.
So just as background for, for the fellow Board members and everyone else listening, what we're about to see is some initial feedback from a meeting last week, a meeting of students, parents, staff, administrators, and a couple of Board members, Joanna and myself. And the topic was really a brainstorm of ideas of how we can support social emotional development of our students during a pandemic. And, and we really wanted to phrase the conversation. We didn't want to limit the conversation based upon, well, can we do that? Or, you know, what needs to be done in order to hold it? We wanted the ideas first, and then we can run it through, you know, how we would implement it later. And the purpose really here is a growing recognition that we need to pay, pay more attention and be acting more on the social emotional development side for our students. We have rightfully been focused on the academic side, and we know that we have some work to do on the academic side as well. But at the same time, we need to be building out, I think, our support for social and emotional development of our students. And so at this meeting, there was really just breakout sessions where people brainstormed their ideas about curriculum, or sorry, co-curricular and extracurricular activities that might happen. And I took that raw data and combined it with some data that Jason and Cliff had collected during our learning continuity planning, learning continuity planning sessions about a month ago or so. And so this is a list, and I did very little editing. I just used the language that was presented. These data were collected, were scribed by, I think it was Matthew, Liz, Cliff, and maybe Jason, I'm not sure. But all I did was compile them into big categories. And I think it's really telling, because these categories really point to where I think our community's concerns are and ideas are for how we can support social emotional development. So this first two pages focus on extracurricular activities, so things that aren't, you know, closely tied to academics and classroom activities. And so the first several bullets, just kind of our general observations and comments that people made about how we can be thinking about implementing extracurricular activities during a pandemic. And then below that, I have like, I'm not sure, seven, eight groupings of ideas that people have come up with. And they're really great ideas and, and a wide breadth. And, and so you can see that first grouping has to do with special events, keeping up school traditions, holidays, and major rites of passage. And then we have a ton of ideas on games and entertainment and fun activities that we might be able to do during pandemic. Clubs and how they can keep on meeting arts and crafts, performing arts, inherently outdoor activities like gardening and hiking and creek restoration, those kinds of things. And then the second page moves on to, what is it here? Yeah, sports and physical activities, health, mental health, social emotional support, and community events. And, and I imagine this kind of a list could be used by sites as kind of a menu of ideas that they could, you know, adopt into their own circumstances, to their own students, with guidance from the district about how to implement these things safely. Just as an example, several people commented that not only do we have to abide by protocols to make sure that we are doing this safely with masks and socially distanced and those kind of things, but we also have to coordinate at each campus to make sure that we're not bringing in 12 clubs on campus at the same time, which would, you know, and which would make mixing more problematic. And so though, with that kind of guidance from the district, I think this could serve as a menu for sites to start developing plans for activities, extracurricular activities. And then the last two pages go into the co-curricular ideas that people came up with. Again, it starts with just some general observations that people made about how we can implement these. And then it got into really a lot of specifics about the biggest list there you see at the top, in-person classes and programs. These were specific courses or units within courses that people These were specific courses or units within courses that people said, you know what? I think that might be able to be done in person safely. And so that is a list of things that I would, you know, I would ask Cliff and the. School reopening committee to be thinking about as we look to different models of of hybrid instruction. Focusing on these hands-on classes, CTE courses, those kinds of things, lab, science labs. That that provides a nice list of potential courses to focus on. Then we have a lot of ideas about. School services and school facilities and resources that might be made available for in-person use and meetings. By our students, meeting with counselors one-on-one, meeting with teachers one-on-one, the librarian. People made a whole list of school resources that they would like to access during the pandemic. A good list of peer-to-peer support and mentoring was mentioned, you see there on the right-hand side. And then if you can scroll to the next page, Gary. General academic support. Transitional type events, you know, like new student orientation and senior projects and senior class. Projects for campuses. Events, a few folks talked about, you know, we need to be thinking about graduation now, and I agree, we do. And what that might look like? Can we have a series of mini graduations? Can we do one per semester? What are the ideas there? And then also some projects that are linked to courses as well. So altogether, these pages, I think, give us a head start in thinking about. Possibilities that campuses can implement on their own with district guidance on public health and safety.
As we have to be very specific about what activities are happening because we have to run it by the health department, yes?
Yeah, we would have to. We'd have to, you know, we would follow the same principles that we follow. When it talks about conditioning for athletics or in other, in other areas. There are certain things that we'd have to make sure that we could meet. Not all of these activities require, some of these activities can be done student to student. They don't all require necessarily adult. Leadership, there may be some supervision where, but not, not something that they would have to necessarily coordinate.
And not all of these activities have to be done in person. Several of them, you know, said, we can do this online, but we just need the. You know, the the organization to be able to do it online.
Right.
Thank you for doing, this is like amazing. So thank you Sheldon and Joanna and everybody who worked on this is. It's like mind boggling how much you came up with. It's fabulous.
Yeah, they did really, really great.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, my gosh.
And I, you know, I know there's a lot of stuff that you can do online, but I think we should really be looking at ways to get students. Out of the house, away from the screen and on campus or in the garden or something. Because I, I think that's what they need is is. I love the idea of mentoring online in those small little groups and stuff, but. I really want to get, I want to figure out a way so that like kids art class can meet once a week or drama or whatever.
You know, that, that, that kind of brings up a question for me, Ellen. Is, should we also look at this list as things that are attached to classes specifically, like an art class or. Or something like that, especially those co-curricular, but some of the extracurricular also. And so then if that's the case. You know, like, like if we had art classes outside or even gardening outside, who's going to be? Is it the teacher that's going to be providing the oversight of this? Is it, is it just? I, I'm kind of unclear as to how this is all organized. Like you said, there needs to be, they have all these wonderful ideas and they're fabulous. But there has to be an organization to it, and I'm struggling to see.
Yeah.
Whether it's going to come from our staff, which is already.
Right.
Stretched, or if we're going to include this in teachers. You know, if they want to do this in their curriculum. I mean, what's the relationship, I guess, between the curriculum and?
And yeah. That, that would be the work that we would have to, this, the committee's work was to just brainstorm ideas.
Right.
Not get into the details, because some of the, I can tell you for sure that some of these things are not doable. Logistically, but there are also many others that that are. Or there, there may be methods and it, and they, none of them fall on any one individual. Some, and it would have to be balanced out in a way that the benefit to the students outweighs. You know, what, you know, whatever, whatever the, the challenges are of setting it up.
Let me try to, let me throw out an idea that addresses Maddie's question. And first, let me back up by saying, you know, extracurricular and co-curricular activities. They're not just extra stuff that are nice to do when we can. Even though we have put them on the back burner as we focused on, you know, delivering the academic side of things. But they really are critical to academic performance of students.
Absolutely.
And and we've seen.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't even.
Yeah, no.
I wasn't questioning that at all.
I know you weren't. I know you weren't, but I just want to emphasize, you know, you were saying, what's the connection to the academics? And and there might not be a direct one, you know.
I'm sorry, that wasn't, that wasn't what I was asking. What I was asking was what, how, how is it integrated into a classroom?
Right.
Into like, who is integrating it?
Right, right, right. Yeah.
So it's more about, is it going to be within the classroom itself? That's all I'm saying.
I get that. And Maddie, I don't, I don't question that, you know, I, I, I know where you're coming from and I totally.
Okay, good. I, because I could have misspoke.
I just want to clarify this for anyone else who's listening, that in my view, you know, extracurricular and co-curricular. You know, supports are a part of delivering good academic programming. And we saw, you know, we're meeting, you know, data from Cliff that suggests. You know, the pure academic focus isn't doing it. It's not doing it for our students right now. That's what we're hearing from letters and, you know, folks calling us up saying, hey, we need, we need to, our kids to be interacting with with people. So with that said, I imagine a lot of this could be led at the site level. Maybe through the school site council. I really see a huge role for the PTA in these things. Because we've heard from many who said, I'm ready to step up and do something. But need to have the latitude and the kind of the guidance on how to do something. Well, this is a list of things that might be done at a site and at the school site council or a PTA. Working with their principal and their teachers and their students, I think, could be a great way to organize. You know, programming with parameters from the district, something like, you know, even, you know. People even gave us the feedback that there, there has to be regular programming at these sites in order to make it a habit. And it has to be a broad breadth of programming so that all students can be engaged and not just some students. And so, you know, that kind of organization, I think, might be best led at the site level with district guidance.
Well, absolutely, because it's, it's the sites that know what they need and what will work. I have a concern, you know, I see like extracurricular activities that aren't necessarily related to a class. Can be monitored by PTA or other volunteers. The co-curricular stuff that's more, more subject related, like an art class or a music class. Where are the teachers in this are?
There would have to be some level of involvement, know what that looks like. That doesn't necessarily have to be. Some of these things would be non, a non-physical presence and some might be a physical presence. So as an example, if, if we're, if. You know, if. A program decided to move towards doing some, some type of like. Music program decided to move towards doing some type of outdoor concerts. Then they would have some, some level of physical presence that would be taking place outdoors, you know. We wouldn't, you know, so we would require some, you know, working with. With all parties to determine what our people are comfortable with, what's possible and what's safe. And, you know, first and worst.
Absolutely have to do something. We got to get the kids, you know.
Yeah.
They're struggling and they're trying out for it and, you know, first scenario one. Looks good, although I'd like to put the special ed into scenario one. I, I, I feel very strongly that we have to get that going sooner rather than later.
There was, I think, somebody, Joanna, were you going to jump in?
Yeah, I was just waiting for.
Okay.
No, I agree. I would like to see special ed prioritize also, but I had more of a question logistically. You've mentioned it a couple of times, Gary, like there's some things under the current guidelines that we're able to do. Like of those lists, that huge list that, thank you Sheldon for organizing it. Are like, I don't know if you've had a chance. I don't want to put you on the spot about this specifically. But if any of these things were able to just like, kind of go ahead and organize. Without, you know, presenting a whole health plan to the county.
Well, we could, we, the special ed piece, we wouldn't, we would not need to prepare a plan. Certain, certain activities that if we did it just for small cohorts. Certain small cohorts, we wouldn't have to prepare a plan, but if it was a general, general activity. We would. So we'd have to kind of separate them by how, how expansive. The greater the number of students, the more likely we would have to prepare that and present it. That makes sense.
Yes, but that, that's if we're in purple.
Correct.
So.
So.
So are we talking about, I thought, okay, so let me, I'm maybe not clear. This is phased in for when we're reopening after we're out of purple, right?
Not, I hadn't, I, I, I didn't, I, I.
So this is just like, whatever we can do, we'll do what we can now.
Right now, yeah.
Okay. I was unclear on that. Okay.
Depending on the color. Now, as it relates to distance learning, you know that we, we've provided some distance learning cohort support. For the early primary grades and now the intermediate grades. And there's movement on doing that at the secondary level. Matthew, you were, you and Cliff and Jason. Could you speak real quickly? Because I know you had some, some discussions about next steps on that.
Specifically, you're talking about specialized cohorts?
Related to grade, to secondary.
Oh, the DLCs, yeah. So, you know, we've been phasing in the distance learning centers. We started with. Some kind of pilot pods at McDowell, and then we branched out and started them each of the elementary schools. And then we now have four, six in session and Matthew, Jason and. Some, some teachers and other staff met, I believe, yesterday to plan out the rest of the secondary DLCs. So some of them are starting this coming Monday and some of them are starting Thursday.
At the secondary level?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah. So, so as Cliff is saying, every single. Site except, well, every single comprehensive site except for our alt ed at this point is going to have. Yeah, starting Monday, starting next Monday or Thursday, we'll have some sort of distance learning cohort. So we're talking with Ken O'Worth and Pedalum Jr. Getting one going at those sites and two at both Casa and Pedalum High. And all the elementary schools have something going on as well.
Matthew, are those secondary cohorts other than the special ed situation?
Yes. So the, so when we look here, Ellen, just to clarify that scenario to special education. There are, there are students in the cohorts. There's no, you know, there's no. A student with an IEP can be part of the cohort that, you know, I mean, that doesn't matter. The specialized cohorts that we're talking about here are really about teacher-led. So that, these are, these are, our fantastic classified staff are running these small, small cohorts of. Maximum sizes, 12, 12 students to a cohort. But we've talked about, you know, what that, what that, what that would look like at specialized, especially around the South County Consortium. And it's pretty clear that it's, it would be challenging to do without the teacher in the classroom.
Yes.
So looking at the second scenario, that scenario is one where. If you look at the last two items, hybrid, where it says hybrid TK3 and special education, those are. Those are now, students are starting to come back in very small pods and in an instructional setting. And so I know that. That Melinda and Molly have some information regarding, because it was asked at a previous board meeting about what the priorities would be. And so they want to speak to that. I'll let, I'm going to jump off and let you guys jump on to share.
Thanks, Gary. Me have a short PowerPoint to guide our discussion. Unable to share a screen, Gary.
Let's see what we can do. I think Ashley can give you rights.
Okay. Melinda, since you're a panelist, you should be able to share your screen.
Oh, well, I didn't even try. Look at that.
Oh, good.
Thanks, Ashley. Okay, here's our phased in special education instructional cohorts. And Ellen, your points will take, and these will be teacher-led. And in terms of priority turn, and Molly, please jump in at any time. We're looking at K6, moderate to severe, full inclusion, special day classes, elementary. Preschool, then our elementary therapeutic support and all other moderate to severe special day classes, secondary. And then secondary therapeutic support programs.
Does anybody need those kind of explained?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Can you go back?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So Melinda, did you want to start and explain your students in South County and I'll finish up with Pedalum City Schools?
Right. I'm going to describe a little bit about what it looks like. When we say moderate to severe, that's referring to the level of disability. In terms of what student, for the students. And South County Consortium, we have small special day classes. And there's usually eight to 12 students and a teacher and two to three instructional assistants. And then, and then our therapeutic support program, these are for students with more emotional disabilities and behavioral difficulties. These are students who access general education curriculum and do not have intellectual disabilities, for example. Molly, did you want to jump in on yours?
So in our general ed classes, we have students in full inclusion and they also have moderate to severe disabilities. It's how they qualify in special education. They may have an intellectual disability or more moderate to severe on the autism spectrum. And we also have students in our special day classes and on the continuum of special education. They are students that are considered mild to moderate, a little bit more towards the moderate with their disabilities and require a modified curriculum. To be able to access, you know, grade level. It's, it's, it's a modified version, but. You know, they, they need the support in a, in a classroom setting to be able to access that.
Molly, are those kids that are in a modified general education, what are they doing right now? Are they doing, are they in those classes on Zoom with, with their general ed teachers? And how is that, how are they being supported?
Yeah, so we have about 24 students that receive full inclusion support from kindergarten through high school. And some of our students are, are participating. Most of our students have an instructional assistant. And so the instructional assistant and the child will be on Zoom. And typically the parent has to do a lot of help to support their child. And after some of the direct instruction, there may be a breakout room for the instructional assistant and the student to work together. Some of it is successful and some isn't. And that's, you know, part of the reason why. There's this push to get students in special education back into the classroom. Because it's really all about access. It's about being able to, to learn. because it's really all about access. It's about being able to, to learn and you know, there's, there are challenges with the distance learning that Melinda and I will get into a little bit later. Some are doing okay. I would say the majority are struggling.
Did anybody have more questions about the programs themselves? No?
What's the secondary therapeutic support?
So those are our high school therapy support programs, and we have three right now, and those are for students who have more emotional and behavioral difficulties. And they take, they spend some time in the special education classroom, and then they spend quite a bit of time in the general education setting as well. But it's a therapeutic setting where they have counseling, and the whole program is really designed to, with therapy responses and where in terms of working with the students.
So can we get those groups in small cohorts? Are there a lot of students?
Our max at the secondary therapy support is 12 students. So there'd be 12 students, a teacher and two classroom assistants, and then the counselor is there as well typically.
So it then, kind of piggybacking onto Ellen, all of these would qualify as small cohorts?
We may have.
Already?
Yes, we may have to look at, because of social distancing and some of the
Oh, yeah.
students, we didn't mean, we might have to look at splitting them into two groups, and the teacher could go to classrooms. There's, those are logistics that we'd have to look at. But yes, they are all under, or very close to the 16.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so they're all eligible for small cohorts?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Great questions. Thank you.
So would we be bringing the students back with their aides? And then the kids who don't have one-on-one aides, I guess, what are we doing for them now during distance? And would, would they, I assume that they would be on the priority list to come back, the priority return?
So. All right, so for the, since for our, the South County programs, the teacher is doing Zoom instruction, and the assistants are doing breakout rooms. And so for those programs, they're getting their instruction through Zoom with the teacher and the classroom assistants. Now, full inclusion, I think is different. That's the students who would have aides assigned to them, and Jenna, is that what you're referring to, Joanna?
No, just the students who are like already pushed into the class that have maybe like RSP math or English.
Okay.
You know, just a couple of classes.
Molly, did you?
Not, not the full.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So I just, just to clarify, so you know, did you want me to go over the different students and how the different programs that we have and how that works a little bit, just a brief? Just so that you, you may understand the difference between full inclusion, special day class, and resource support? Okay, so in full inclusion in the elementary, at the elementary sites, the students are in a general ed classroom. They, in addition to their general ed teacher, there's also a full inclusion teacher that collaborates with the general ed teacher and the assistant to modify the curriculum. But the assistant is always with the student. And so because of that collaboration, we would be able to bring the students in full inclusion back with their assistant. And there'd be collaboration with the full inclusion teacher and the general education teacher. But they may not be taught necessarily by the, the general ed teacher because, you know, they're zooming with their, their general ed students. I think the families would be in support of their children coming back with the assistant, with that collaboration among that staff. For our students in special day, the students in the special day classes are typically in their classes for about four classes, and then they may be in the general ed setting for a portion of their day. So for those students, they would be with their teacher for, you know, several hours in the day would be the plan. And then our students who receive resource support are typically students that are more in the mild category. They typically have some attention concerns or a specific learning disability. And they're in general ed classes, they're in collaborative classes where there's a resource teacher and a general ed teacher. So they may take, you know, a collaborative English or math class at the junior, higher, high school. And they typically will always take a study skills class. But the majority of the students who are receiving resource support are in the generalized setting.
And how are they doing?
Well, it was shared by curriculum and instruction, Cliff and Jason, that they are doing about the same as they were doing last year, grade-wise.
Is that poorly?
You know, not necessarily. Because the students in secondary are getting a considerable amount of support, whether they're in the collaborative classes or in their study skills. So in the study skills classes, you know, there's an instructional assistant as well, and they'll go over their areas, they're missing assignments, and they come up with a plan. So the students are, are, are doing, you know, pretty well. Not all, but a, a, a good majority are, are doing well enough. The students in the elementary have much more kind of targeted direct instruction by the resource teacher when they're pulled out and the instructional assistant. So my understanding from communicating with the elementary teachers are, those are going very well. There's also the time in the afternoon for office hours. And many students, especially in the elementary, are assigned to go to their, you know, their kind of, their groups to do their intervention. And in the high school, you know, it's sometimes it's harder because you know, you may ask your student, the students to come to office hours, and they get a Zoom link, and some may show up and say may not. You know, but I think the biggest concern is the elementary level. You know, where they're learning to read, and they're learning their math skills, and they're learning their basic, you know, foundational skills. You know, and they need that, they need that because, you know, there's regression. You know? And they need the, the continual prompts, they need the repetition. You know, so.
And that's at all, at elementary and sec, I mean, the, sorry, the full inclusion, special day and resource are at all, at both secondary and elementary, right? But the concern is kind of more a little bit with elementary because of the way it's set up.
Yeah, I mean, there's concern for both, but I would say, you know, also, I didn't, I failed to mention a little bit about full inclusion in secondary, and those students are doing, you know, a little better with, with the Zoom. But they still, you know, it would be really helpful for them to have some in-person instruction, whether it's with their instructional assistant, with that collaboration that I was speaking of earlier. Just because, you know, they need prompts, they really kind of need that in-person prompting. You know, they can get highly distracted with Zoom. You know, we just know that, you know, kind of historically, that it's, it's, the reason it's so successful is really having that close contact.
Where are the teachers at with this? I mean, that's always the question.
Is that something, Matthew, that?
Yeah, maybe.
I mean, there's concerns, you know, I mean, there's concerns about, about, you know, health and welfare. Some folks feel that they're doing, doing well. It's, it, it can't be answered in a, in, in a general terms.
Okay, that's fine.
It's too, but I, there, you know, I mean, everyone is, is, wants to do this safely, whatever this, whatever priority return is. That we know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do want to just say that our teachers are doing a wonderful job. I've been in communication with all of our special ed teachers. I'm so impressed with their dedication, with their creativity, with their passion, you know, and you just, you know, they're not giving up at all. So I really do want to make sure that, you know, they get what they deserve.
You beat me to it, Molly. I'm gonna say the same thing, and actually, our teachers have been featured countywide and have done trainings for other teachers.
So you're not surprised.
Yeah, they are just fantastic, and the classified staff are working just, just as hard. So really.
Absolutely.
Best. And our related sports staff as well. Okay, so just want to kind of define what a moderate to severe disabilities. Those are individuals with intellectual disabilities, autism, and orthopedic impairment. So there is speech and language delays, or nonverbal visual hearing impairments, and fragile health. And one thing to keep in mind is these students are at least two to three grade levels below their peers, and this would include Molly's full inclusion students as well.
What's orthopedic impairment?
So that's just with a physical disability.
Terrible policy.
Right, right. That may need positioning and physical therapy. Did you have any questions about this slide, or?
Is this available? Well, this is being recorded, so, okay.
Yep. Absolutely.
I was actually gonna ask for a copy.
Yeah, if you could just shoot us a copy would be great.
I would also like a copy of all that extra and co-curricular ideas.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And so that therapy expert program has students with emotional disabilities, including depression, severe depression, anxiety, and behavioral challenges, and learning challenges. And so they do have difficulty accessing full instruction in the general education setting without support.
And I imagine those emotional disabilities are exacerbated by distance learning, yes?
For some students, absolutely. Some are doing fairly well. To be honest, they have a some social anxiety and social school phobia, and they're happy as heck to stay at home right now. That's not the general consensus. Yeah. Okay. So, and Molly can jump into, and some of the challenges we have for students who have more moderate to severe disabilities are difficulty accessing Zoom. We have, you know, been told students will hide under tables, run away crying. They won't even get on the format, some of the students. So we're not even able to do much interaction with them. Service delivery over Zoom, this is primarily physical and occupational therapy. It's challenging to, to guide parents to safely do this, physical therapy in particular, over Zoom. We are doing it, but it's not ideal. And then a number of our students have social skills goals, and it's just not compatible with this format.
Yeah.
Parents are providing all interventions. They, you know, we have this wonderful special education staff who have specialized training, and parents are being asked to do these interventions right now. Parents are working their tails off, let me tell you.
Yeah, I bet.
But they are.
There are, there are solid partners. And a lot of our students are dependent on adult prompting, so it's not like we could leave them with the camera, the majority of them, and then walk away because the iPad might be thrown on the floor, or they just, all of a sudden, they're gone. Things of that nature. And then they definitely are showing significant learning, some, not all, but many are showing significant learning, social behavioral regression. Molly, did you want to add anything?
You know, I would just say that especially in, with full inclusion and in our special day classes, there's a very high structure and routine. So when the students come in, you know, it is a bit institutional, but you know, the bell rings, and they hang up their, you know, their code, and they sit down, and they have the modeling from their general ed peers, whether they see them in the general ed setting for a portion of the day, or on the playground, or. And so the students really learn these kind of being in school behaviors, and that can't really be replicated in the home. Because, I, I, I mean, so our, our parents of our students really depend on having this high structure and high routine, and also, you know, from the support of their assistants, you know, if they need a break, there, it's just that it's, it's hours and hours of, of coaching. And it's just, it just can't be replicated. We, we can't expect our parents to do that. It's, you know, and I feel like through this, we are asking them to do that due to the level of their needs.
And our goal is always independence for these students, and I watched an incredible lesson today, and the teacher was doing a great job, and the child had all these materials that the teacher had, and they're, they're participating, but the parent was there prompting, and we're trying to reduce that amount of prompting. This is a little person, but in general, if someone's sitting next to you prompting, that does decrease your independent level. And that is always our goal, is for more independence for these students.
But not all parents are able to do that.
Correct. Or they may over-prompt, or, yeah. Trust me, they're working hard. Expertise. So our therapy support program, the challenges are more depressed, increased depression, anxiety, and social isolation, and then some behavior declines that we don't always see during a Zoom session, but it's reported to us from the parents. And then establishing rapport, we have all these new students, and the teachers are having to establish rapport over a Zoom format. They haven't had the opportunity to be in person where, you know, you body language and just facial expression, just that proximity in general that helps to build rapport. Yeah.
No, it just seems to me that we have to do this now. I mean, we have to get these cohorts organized and happening. You know, or these poor kids are just gonna keep falling further and further behind. And it's really not fair to the parent. I mean, the parents are gonna do what they can do, but some of them may have to work. And, you know, or they may have two or three kids that they're trying to help. So I just think we need, this is something that needs to happen soon. I don't know what, I think the rest of the board probably agrees with me, I'm not sure, but Maddie's smiling, so.
I think that's the end of that, of that present slide presentation, right? I think that was the last slide. Perfect. Let me go back to Hold on one second. Just wanting to share that. There we go. I think that that, that was the informa, that was some of the information that we wanted to at least provide, some background, some background information in a couple of different areas. Again, this is a, these are just kind of scenarios as, as a, as a basic concept. The idea behind it would be that whenever, see, we haven't talked about a date, because a date is not important for the purposes of this reopening scenario. It is when the board determines to reopen, to, to reopen. What I'm calling reopening for right now is, is doing something different than what we're doing right now. We're starting to slowly reintegrate students back into school. Because even if it was, even if it was extracurricular, co-curricular, you're starting to reintegrate students back, back into school. Whatever those scenarios are, you know, the, the concept of bringing groups back and seeing how that is going, how that's going, and a lot of that is related to the health and welfare of, of both the staff and the students, that that's, that it's not, we would not be in favor of, of coming back in one fell swoop. That would be a, that would be probably the logistically very difficult to even pull off. As it relates to potential metrics, because I know that some folks had asked about it. I know Cliff can share a little bit related to the metrics related to student grades and performance, because I know that was asked to bring that to this meeting. So I'll pass it to Cliff and let him, let him jump in.
All right, can I share my screen?
Should be able to.
All right. All right, so hopefully you're all seeing a chart or bar graph that's got first grading period on top. Can you guys see that? Okay, good. So I'm gonna show you a couple of things. One is just the overall grade distribution for the first marking period. So the first marking, the first grading period was through September 18th last year, probably the 17th or 16th. So the blue columns, the blue bars represent last year, first marking period. And the orange represent this year, first marking period. And this is for all students, grade seven through 12. Okay, it's not, not TK through six.
The A's bumped up a little bit.
So yeah, so A's bumped up a little bit, F's doubled, right? And then in the middle, it's fewer Bs, fewer Cs, same amount of Ds. So we'll get into subgroups in a minute and see some more detail, but just in terms of raw numbers of grade distribution, slight increase in the As, and then a doubling in the number of Fs. And this is consistent countywide. Uh, we had a meeting last week. Uh, SCO convened, uh, the secondary districts throughout the county, teachers, counselors, admin, mental health staff, just to look at the county's data, because the county's seeing this, the state's seeing this, and just they're, they're trying to start a conversation on what are some things we can do short term? Um, you know, mid-range and long-term to see, you know, how we can improve these outcomes and, and try to address what the issues are. Um, obviously, the big thing here is the learning model, the instructional model is totally different. Uh, learning is different. We're in the middle of a pandemic, so so far, and just the first grading period, this is, this is what we're looking at. Um, I do want to add, the first marking period for secondary schools is typically slightly inflated. There's only so many assignments, and if you're doing well, right, the grade looks pretty good. And then as the year goes on and more information is added in, you'll, you'll see when I switch to the second marking period, um, the As are gonna drop off, there's gonna be more Bs, right? So that's just typical. So so the second marking period, uh, just ended last Friday. And grade, the grading, uh, window closed last night, so this is this is hot off the press here. So second marking period, so you can see, right, the, the total number of As went down, it was fifty-three percent, now it's forty-seven, but that's typical in the second marking period. So again, more As, and then we've now more than doubled in the Fs. E's went down, C's went down, D's went up. So, so the trends are, you know, we're more than doubling the number of Fs. Bs and Cs are going down, yet there is some increase, um, with As. Any, any questions on these two before I break it down and we look by subgroup? Okay, so again, this was number of grades, this wasn't number or percentage of students, this was total number of grades. So I just switched screens. Can you see this new graph? Okay, hold on, let me stop and restart. Which one am I going to? All right, so this is just the first marking period, not the second marking period. Uh, our, our grade distribution, and this is a little different. This is the percentage of students who have, uh, one or more failing, failing grades. So if a student has multiple failing grades, they're only counted here, uh, once, not multiple times. So the percentages are a little different. So if you just take a, a look overall, one thing, there's a couple of things that may stand out. How, Molly briefly mentioned this. But if you look, the students with disabilities on the whole are actually doing well, there are fewer students receiving at least one failing grade than the year prior. And they're the only group. So uh, the rest of the subgroups, all students group, are English learners. More than doubled in every grade level. More, we have, uh, more than doubled the number of students that are failing.
Uh, Cliff, what's the, you have fifteen percent and then, you know, and a gray number twenty-two percent?
So the, the gray is marking period one, this current school year, distance learning. The blue is where they were. Oh, did I get that wrong? Yeah, yeah. So gray is current marking period one, current year. Uh, the blue is where they were last year.
Oh, oh, oh.
Cliff, were you able to, um, find out if these students have, like, if they're missing classes? Um, like, are they more absent? Are they tardy? Is there any kind of tie to attendance at all?
Yeah, I mean, we, we haven't fully correlated attendance, Joanna, um, but attendance is definitely a P. That is one of the things that we were brainstorming with the county group last week, among many other things, as you can imagine. Um, it's, it seems to be the, you know, the elephant in the room here is mental health, social health, uh, you know, academic integrity, motivation. There's a, there's a whole number of factors here that are, that are contributing to, you know, less success in distance learning. We went from do no harm in the spring, right, which was the guidance from state to basically back to grading as normal. Yet, you know, this isn't normal. I think we're, we're all still adjusting and teachers are trying to, you know, we're, we're trying to find that sweet spot of holding students accountable and also motivating them, but not just giving grades away. It's like, where's the, where's the happy medium? Um, and that's what we're, that's what we're hoping with the county to be able to identify some interventions, some thoughts, some ways to address this. Because it's, it's only gotten worse from first marking period to second marking period.
Have teachers shared at all why they think the, um, the failing grades have gone up, at least for, for all of them or even for the subgroups?
Um, well, I don't want, I, I don't know if I want to speak on behalf of all teachers, but we do have some teachers in our group.
Only, only if you'd ask them. I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot either. If you haven't, uh, that's fine, just wondering.
So we, this last week at our, at our meeting with SCO, we broke off into district subgroups. So it was, you know, the pedaluma group with counselors, teacher staff, and, um, a, a lot of the things I just mentioned are things that came up. You know, you know, motivation, participation, academic integrity is really hard to verify. You know, just, you know, students producing their own work, being motivated, produce their own work. You know, just the, the instructional model. You know, everyone's home situation is slightly different, whether families are involved or not, whether families are working or not. So it just, there's, there's lots of competing factors here, um, but the overall, uh, the overall kind of focus of the, of the, uh, convening was that this really seems to be more of a mental, social health issue than purely an academic issue. And I think, you know, if you, if you talk to teachers, if you talk to students, you know, they'd agree. It's as, as the pandemics wore on, it's wearing students down, it's wearing staff down, it's wearing all of us down. So.
I think that part here speaks clearly to EL being among
Yeah.
prioritized to come back.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, me too. I mean, that's
I mean, look at that. And, and it's also kind of like building on last year because that learning loss of their English proficiency seems like, wow. I mean, from nineteen percent in, in, and grade nine to fifty-three?
And I mean, I, I always felt that we needed to prioritize ELs and special ed. And get them, get them in cohorts or something. So, because there was already a gap, um, from last year, right, on the LCFF? Wasn't there a gap there? A learning gap between the ELs and the native speakers? So we, we were already facing that when they were in class. So now it's just much, much worse, and we gotta get those kids back.
Agreed. Agreed. Any other, any other thoughts or questions on this data? There, there is one bright spot, even though it's, it's a small number. For the most part, homeless and foster youth are failing less, but they're, they're small numbers of, of students, but if, if there's a bright spot of that, plus the special ed numbers.
That's really interesting. So when, when this was, was this presented at your meeting with the county, with all the different people from the various school districts? So are there similar to this? What recommendations did they have? Did you have brainstorming about how they address particular subgroups that are really struggling?
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's the ultimate goal. That's, uh, probably what we're gonna focus on tomorrow. Tomorrow's the next convening of that group. I will say anecdotally, um, there are two districts in the county that did not follow this trend of increased Fs. Um, and it was, uh, Rancho Cotati and Geyserville. And of, of the many, you know, factors, uh, one they do have in common is they both are following a three-class, a three-period schedule. At one time, they're not doing all six courses. Um, and they have, in the afternoon, every day, they have an EL and a special ed daily, you know, check-in with their teachers. So you may have, you know, let's say I have, I'm an English learner and I have ELD fourth period. If for this quarter of the year, I'm only seeing periods one, two and three, I don't have ELD. But we're required to provide the services, just like where it was special ed. So they're providing daily services outside of the three periods in the afternoon every day. So that's, that's one model, that's one example, but those were just two districts that kind of stood out as they're bucking the trend. This definitely could be one of the reasons why. It's hard to put your finger on exactly why, but my ears perked up when I heard, you know, fewer classes focusing, you're going twice as fast, but you're focusing on fewer things and it was easier for kids to stay organized. And we did have, uh, data from students, they interviewed students all over the county, lots of kids um, in Santa Rosa. And they were sharing out their experiences, and that was one of the things that came up, just the amount of classes trying to, you know, students trying to juggle in distance learning. So that, that's something that definitely, you know, rang a bell with us.
Didn't we talk about that at the last meeting, when we were talking about hybrid schedules for you to pursue the idea of three classes?
Exactly.
Or even two?
Cliff, did, uh, get any, uh, info from, from that district on COVID cases and, you know, uh, incidences that led to, you know, shutdowns or anything like that?
So, so, yeah, so let me be clear. I'm, I'm not saying they necessarily came in person for those cohorts in the afternoon, for the, for the ELs and special ed. They just had a specific course or specific time every day where they would get special ed and EL attention and services. So that even if they're, like, let's say, if I was an RSP student and I had, you know, RSP math and a study skills class, if those weren't on my schedule right now for these three classes, they would still provide tho- those services in the afternoon, kind of outside of the three periods.
All right, got it.
Yeah, at our, at, at the committee that Cliff's referring to, one of the things that came out as far as next steps was a desire from the committee to hear more specifically from these groups. Cliff had an opportunity because he was in a, he was in a, um, breakout room with them. So I, I think we're gonna get a little bit more, more information that'll be coming regarding, um, what they, what they're doing and whether that's something, you know, that we want to look, take a look at or not.
And what, what we don't know, I
Oh, I'm sorry.
What we don't know is, I don't know if they're following the same exact grading policy they always followed, if they've made adjustments. So it was just, it was just kind of a quick pass. Um, you know, and it may not be the, the panacea, it, it appears to be, but definitely we want to know more. I, I think they're gonna talk specifically a little bit more about those districts, because everyone was asking those questions. What are you doing differently? How come, you know, what's it different about your two districts, how you're approaching this? So we'll see what we find out.
So we have only, we have one, only one more piece set of data to, to share out tonight. And, because it was asked, was there any, was there any data related to social, emotional? And so we do have one data, data point, and it really, the data point is, um, was the genesis of the meeting that Cliff's referring to. And so to kind of give you a little bit of background, um, there was a national study that was done by an organization, and they came into Sonoma County as they did all other counties in, um, in the area, but also around the country. They, they selected counties in, in every region, um, and they did a study of, of impact of COVID nineteen on students and specifically distance learning. Now, as a disclaimer, we were not a district, a high school district that was selected to do this. However, it was six other neighboring high school districts, high schools in Sonoma County. What came from that was a follow-up call a couple of months later from the, um, from the research firm saying, we would like to do some additional work with your county. You're an outlier group. So let me show you that one slice of data, and I only have one piece of data from them. It's proprietary. They have not released the rest of it. Um, but you can get a general sense. I think the one snapshot kind of, um, is very telling why they wanted to meet with us. So let me see if I can pull it up finally. It keeps showing up every time I say share. There we go. Okay, this is a screenshot, so it's gonna be a little bit blurry, but, um, this was the question that was asked. Do any of the following make it hard for you to do the at-home learning opportunities by your school? What was interesting is in every other county in the, in the nation that they did the survey on, the number one item was distractions from siblings or family members. And the feeling anxious about the future often did not come up in even the top three or four. But it was, we were the only county in their study that the feeling anxious, anxious about their future jumped out in the data.
We're the only county that's still in purple. I think that's why.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of speculation, there's a lot of speculation on that, and, you know, I mean, some, some folks would say that maybe this is the straw that, you know, the, the COVID was a straw that broke the camel's back. These kids have been through a lot in the last four years. Maybe that had something to do with it, maybe not, but, but regardless, we're hearing a lot of this anecdotally from students. What I mean by that is conversations that we're having with students related to performance. The re- the response is something to the effect of, well, why is this even important? I'm not gonna be, even be able to go to college next year, or this, or this, it's usually related to a very short-term outlook on the future. So we're digging more into this. Part, part of this whole purpose of, of meeting is to try to get to the bottom of of where are we with our social, emotional health, with our youth? Now, you could dismiss it and say, well, it wasn't the Pedaluma kids. Or you could say, you know, that's a pretty, pretty comprehensive study when it's six, six of our high schools or, or secondary schools, um, in, in the area. And I think that you had three districts that they went to.
And what group was this?
The group was, uh, the name of the group, Cliff, do you remember? I could tell you, hold on a second.
Well, yeah, one of the things that we're speculating was
Youth truth.
You, oh, you
Youth truth is the name of the, not, the
Okay, I've heard of them.
Yes.
One of the things they were speculating, just why is Sonoma County, some, Sonoma County might be different? So in our county partic- in particular, fire, smoke days, fire, fire COVID, or COVID fire, however, whatever order, so.
Well, there's a flood in there too, so.
And smoke. Why not?
So you know, I think it's, um, you know, there's certainly more to be, you know, that we, we would need to do in this particular area of, of, of study. So it's just that, that first blush. But it, it's pretty, it's pretty important because it's, 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 it's nationally normed. So we can see that we're, we're an outlier in this. So we can see that we're, we're an outlier in this, in this particular case. So back to, whoops, didn't want to do that. Sorry. So really back to these questions. Is these are the decisions that we have to make on, at the board, our next board meeting. Is we need to get some direction related to phased in or. Or all programs at once. We need to know, we need to come up with a, a phased in approach that you're comfortable with. And again. When we start that. Depends on what, you know, what the board decides, but also. As we move through steps, what triggers or metrics do you want to use? From this list or other list, there may be other things that we left off. But what, what are the things that are going to cause us to move from one to the next? Because that's the most common thing. That, you know, we hear is well, what, you know, what, what's it going to take to move from one phase to the next? Well, we haven't even determined that what those phases are. And so we needed to really determine that, that piece first. Was one other, go ahead Sheldon, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna get, you know, get that discussion going and I mean, I. I suspect that my fellow board members are feeling. Like I do that we want to phase approach that is prioritized on a need, I think. Although the extracurricular and co-curricular, I think we, I, I want to start moving on that. You know, as soon as we can, at least putting together proposals that the county can review. And, and you know, say yes or no to. And I think there's more resources. Available for the extracurricular, co-curricular because of parental involvement, student involvement and those kinds of things. On, in terms of the academic groups, you know, my, I, I would like to see a prioritization. Based on need with the ELS and younger students being first. My, my. Observation of how we have phased into distance learning centers is that phasing it in has been. Was a good choice. I mean, in retrospect, I mean, it seems like it's, it's fairly stable. We learned from the early groups about, you know, how to do it better. And, and, and so I, you know, I, I, I think that's a, it's both safer, more stable. And allows us to, you know, work with higher need students first.
I am. I kind of like the combo of those first two scenarios. So. Like Sheldon mentioned, the co-curricular, extracurricular ideas. That have to be more specific because we have to get permission. But I also. I want to see the special ed cohorts. K through. Secondary, I, you know, I, I've gotten letters and I'm sure you guys have too about emails about high school kids that are flailing. Their special ed kids. And I would also like to see some EL interventions for our first kind of. Phased in, I guess, before we get out of purple.
Just, just to clarify then, for any in-person instruction while we're still in purple. It's only elementary is allowed and we'd have to get a waiver. Secondary wouldn't be. Allowed to, we, we, we can do kind of our cohort support, but different than in-person instruction.
I thought our special, special ed, we didn't need a waiver.
Correct.
That is correct and English learners theoretically, although.
Is that only elementary?
No, I, I thought special ed was through secondary.
No, no, no. Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Is that, that like the waiver is only good and. It, it's only relevant to TK through six. But if we don't have, but there's the exception of special ed, right?
I'm going to pull it up so you can see it directly. I, I think you have it up now. So the, the.
Oh, it doesn't have the L.
It, it's, yes, it does. It's.
Oh, I got it. Okay.
Yeah, so counties in the purple are permitted. To offer in-person instruction and services to small cohorts of students with special needs, students with disabilities, English learners, homeless.
Great.
Foster youth.
And there's no limit on the grade.
Yeah, operationally, operationally, it's students with disabilities should be, should be a prioritized group.
Yes.
And this does not require approval. It's a local school board decision.
And same with ELS, yes? That's what that says, special needs.
Yes, but it's, what would be a little bit different? In that scenario would be when they start talking about cohorts. That doesn't necessarily, that's not necessarily synonymous with classes.
Okay.
So it might be in a special ed scenario. But it might not be necessarily in an EL scenario.
Harry, do we have ELS in the cohorts that are at the elementary schools right now? Weren't those?
Yeah, yes, we have ELS and special ed students in those cohorts.
So. I have, I've had this issue for quite a long time and I guess I need to ask. About this, what, so if we, if we wanted to bring back. Cohorts of special ed. Let's just start with that. Is there a secondary schedule? We don't have a secondary schedule, do we? That would accommodate an in-person instruction?
There would have to be, you're correct. There would have to be a schedule that would be developed specifically cohort.
Am I, am I, am I right in assuming that that's one of the primary things we have to? Figure out now before we can bring these cohorts back.
Yes.
And, and if we, right now secondary is doing six classes. They just finished. Grading period, we can't, can we just say, okay, we're just going to do three for the rest? I mean, I don't think we can do that. Cliff? Can we, that seems like very problematic to all of a sudden say, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could definitely talk about would it work if. Especially the students in line, if we followed the same. Schedule that we're doing a distance learning, but in person. Sixty-minute periods with fifteen-minute breaks. Like we could follow that same schedule, then we, then we're not. Conflicting if students have electives and other courses. But yeah, I mean, making a change right now from six to three would be a no-go.
That, that could be something that we can consider when we start bringing students back.
Right, or something we may want to plan for to start the next semester, just so we start.
Yes.
Yes.
We, I, I, I would like to see that as, as a top priority. Because we're just kind of mushing around with secondary and we can't, to me, I, I, I just feel like all of this, we can't even move into scenario three. Until we have some kind of secondary schedule. If you're talking about alternative ed, if you're talking about career tech.
Yeah, it's going to require some time to put it, to put this together. That's why it, it. You know, having, you know, having our scenarios, we'll focus first on that. Again, whatever that first phase is, we'll focus on that first. And make sure that we, and then we'll move on to the, to, to the subsequent phases.
Why propose the first phase is EL, special ed and extracurricular, co-curricular activity? What do you guys think?
And I would add to Maddie's comment about, you know, rethinking what hybrid would look like in the secondary for the latter phases. I, I wasn't a part of the, that committee in the summer. And, and so I wouldn't want to strap Tyler hands to any, you know, particular. Format. I, my, my, my direction or what I would like to direct them is to look at another. An alternative hybrid model that reduces. The mixing. Whether that's a three period at a time or something else, you know, that we got a lot of feedback in that last meeting about. How about if we focus just on the, you know, labs and hands-on courses or something like that? I don't know what the option is. I think that committee can, can figure out what the best option is at secondary level.
I also liked Linda's idea when she brought up the stable cohorts. Where everybody's in a class, so everybody has to take English, so maybe English is the class and then. So they're in a class or with the teacher and then they're zooming the rest of their classes. And if we, if they only had three classes and one of them they were in and they stayed there for the other two. I think that might be a way to, to. Well, first of all, they wouldn't be moving. Right? They'd be in a class. With a teacher and they do that class and then they do their other classes via Zoom. The teacher would still be there. But they wouldn't be moving.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's easier said than done.
I know.
I mean, take a group of kids, do they all have the same exact? Number of, I mean, do they have the same exact courses to the, the same group through all six courses, even if the teacher didn't mix?
No, if it would be, they would, they would, they would automatically have the same class. It would just be for one of those classes. The difference is that they would, I, what I heard was that they. So I'm a teacher, whatever I'm, whatever that second period is, for example. Those students would stay, would stay with that teacher. And do their DL in that classroom. The challenge would be the fact that not everybody has. Classes the same period, like all teachers are not on. You know, we're on a five-six model, meaning teachers teach five periods. But they have, they're, but there are six periods. That's the challenge is that not everybody would be on at the, or, or on currently at the same time.
That's why doing three classes. That met every day. That's why I suggested English. I mean, that's what we used to do at Tamalas because everything happened in the English classes. Because all students take English all four years. But I just, you know, I think. We, we need to figure out a way to get the kids back to school, minimal mixing. And, you know, it, it, it just seems to me that six classes are too many. And that the idea of the stable cohort where they're not moving, so they all, you know, you take. AP English Lit and the kids are in there. And then they do English Lit with their teacher, but then they stay there and then they do their other two classes, whatever those are. I guess that might be complicated though.
What's the teacher doing?
Teacher has five, four other classes.
The teacher has four other classes.
Oh, so the teacher. You're an English teacher and you're, you know, you hate math. So it's like, what if there's a kid in, I don't know, math three or something?
Yeah, it seems pretty complicated. You'd have kids zooming at the same time, all in different classes. All conversing at different times.
Plus the teacher would be zooming.
Plus the teacher's teaching. I know there was a district that I think Marin County, one of our, one of the districts at the very beginning of the spring was looking at how to do this. And they were looking at locking in kids to like, so basically there was less. You know, less choice because they would lock you in, like you had English and history and name something else and science. All together, same, you know, thirty-two group, you know, same thirty-two kids and the teachers came in and out. You know, it works to a point, but then it gets complicated with electives and.
There's an, there's an old adage that comes with scheduling and that is that if, if someone can't explain it in an elevator. Up in thirty seconds, then it's probably too complicated. I think that, I, I do think that with, with, with some general, general parameters, I think that the committee can, can, can. Could come up with some ideas. I really, that would be the group that I would, I would say, because they're going to come up, they, they know better about some of the nuances.
That's true.
Related to, you know, the schedule. So I think that that's, you know, that is, is going to be important. What we'll need is, is, is I, I still anticipate that something like that is probably. Not something that's going to be down the initial phase. We really need to know the specifics related to that first phase. More than anything, the, and, and moving into the second phase, whatever that is, we need to know that and then we can, we can. We can plan that out accordingly. Because we don't, what we don't know right now is this, what we don't know is. What's going to happen with the health climate? In Sonoma County. And so we're operating actually in the right manner. We're not operating on a set time. We're looking at, at getting these systems in place, ready to go. And then who knows what we're going to see in the next, in the next couple of weeks.
But Cliff, you, going back to the committee, you know. I really believe that we need to, for secondary, just do three classes. For the first half of this, of the second semester and then the other three classes for the second half and they meet every day. I just think six classes is too much movement. And. We have to be creative and, and I think that doing it three and three is the way to go.
What are other, what are other people's thoughts on that?
I, I agree that the, the six class AV model that, you know, has been scoped out. Is just fragile. It's just so vulnerable to shutdown. That I, I don't see, and, and it's actually, as we've heard from several teachers. Reduces, you know, live contact time between the student and the, and the teacher. But I won't go so far as to say, let's do the three and three. I, I want the committee to figure out what is the best route for it. I just. I don't think the sixth class model can work.
Yeah.
Others? Maddie, kind of your.
I know. Well, I agree. I, I. I've always thought that that six periods, I, I know, I, I realize, you know. During the summer, just coming up with that, nothing against that. It's just that when I started thinking about the, the actual. Working of it, it was untenable and, you know. Subject to shut down within a day, I would think. But I, I, I absolutely, and then I also absolutely agree that it should go to the committee and they can, they can kind of figure it out and. And, you know, because they know their, they know their schools, they know their schedule, you know, their. Their kids, they know their families, they know their classes. And they're perfect, they're, you know, they're capable.
Caitlin, what's your thoughts?
Um, I was gonna just essentially second everything Sheldon said.
Oh, I'm sorry, Caitlin.
No, I was just gonna pontificate. I don't need to.
Thank you, Caitlin.
You're leaving that for everybody else to do.
I'd like to hear from you, Caitlin.
Joanna?
No, I, I feel the same. This would be at the semester.
Yeah.
And is the reopening or what, I don't know what the committee was called this summer. I'm sorry, with the teachers and the counselors. Would this be something that they would revisit to give input on or?
Yeah.
Just move forward.
Yeah, we reached out to the distance learning, the work group from the summer and did a survey of who wanted to continue. Before we open it up to anyone else if they don't. So we gotta, most people want to continue, so we're just going to grab that same group and. See if I was able to join. And just, just so you know, you know, we, we briefly discussed other options in the summer, you know, we, we decided to go with the six period day. You know, it was familiar, it was comfortable. You know, we were already in the pandemic, a lot of upheaval, you know. Changing the schedule uniformly, you know, wasn't necessarily something we wanted to do to add chaos, but. I think, I think we know now that schedule, especially when we come back in hybrid. There's too much mixing cohorts, even though kids are only seeing, you know, three teachers at one time in person, those teachers are seeing. There's too much mixing cohorts, even though kids are only seeing, you know, three teachers at one time in person, those teachers are seeing all, all five classes.
Right.
So the, the whole school ends up becoming this giant cohort and if someone's positive, you know, the whole thing gets shut down. But just, you know, we know there's going to have to be some. Some considerations for whatever model we look at. We're going to run into an issue where, you know, students may finish a course well before the AP testing or the state testing. Or they might be in the middle of it when those tests come, or we already mentioned, English learner and special ed support. What will that look like, especially during times when they may not have those support services? So. We're gonna have to figure this all out and it's gonna, it's gonna be different, but I think we can.
Six classes a day is untenable.
So one question.
Just quickly, I'll throw out another idea, just because it's, it's what's going on at my university. And it, I don't know if it could possibly work at the, at the secondary level, but it's worth throwing out there. And so what we're doing at the university is select classes that are determined to be. You know, just not deliverable online and with a willing instructor, they're offered in person. And so. At my, in my university, we've got four thousand section classes a semester and about seventy of them are happening in person. Nursing practicum and this and that, whatever it is. But anyway, that list of co-curricular activities, that first section. Is that brainstorm of courses or units within courses that folks said, you know what? These are so hands inherently hands-on that, you know, they would be good candidates to, to be in person.
So, so just to, to clarify. That there is really two different things here that. You're, you're asking committee to, to, to look at. One piece is. Is moving into the second semester a three-course model? So if it was under the current scenario, the current environment, that would start a distance learning. And so, and, and, and at some point, at some point, and who knows when that would be. Should the board make the decision to move into a. Into a hybrid model of that three-period or two-period model, whatever's less than three periods or less, I would say. Then it would have to be something that could seamlessly move into that. And it could be, it could be potentially. There's, there's some flexibility for some creativity on what that hybrid could be, like it could be potentially starting out and coming back for one of, one of the classes. Of those three classes, or it could be, you know, a high priority classes. Or it could be, you know, a, a hybrid more along the lines of an elementary hybrid. Which is a little bit, a little bit easier, at least structurally to do. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, because I want to make sure that it's those three. You know, that it's, it's a, it's starting a second semester regardless in a, in, in a, the model of the number of classes. That students are going to be required to, to take for the remaining of the, the school year.
Yes, I think you got it, Gary, and, and I would add to it that. Going, starting the second semester, my, my sense is that starting the second semester on a six-course model. Precludes us from going into a hybrid. And that's what our concern is.
I also really like Sheldon's idea of those high priority classes. Where like music, drama, art, career tech. Maybe those can, I don't know. I, I, I think your group's gonna have to get really creative, Cliff.
You know, I think that's why I was trying, what, kind of what I was trying to say was what you said so well, Gary, was. You know, the importance of getting that secondary schedule. Done before we start our second semester.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's gotta be.
Possible. I mean, because, yeah, if we start out where we are now, I, I think we wouldn't be it. We, we don't have a schedule we can modify. Or it'd be very hard.
For, for, well, for this, you know, assuming we're still in the red and we're starting in distance learning.
Right.
We would probably follow the same exact schedule instead, but same bell schedule. So we have three sixty-minute periods.
Right.
Right? Instead of, instead of, you know, A days and B days, it would be all A days per quarter and then all B days. The, the trick is the three-period hybrid, right? That's, that's what we really need to figure out. So when we can come back in person, what does the hybrid look like?
Well, they wouldn't be able to start with the six individual classes.
No.
Because then, then they're, they would be all off. Let's say we could come back in, you know, the beginning of February, that's in the middle of the grading period. I mean, instructionally, it doesn't work unless we start the, well, I don't know, to me. Unless we start the semester on a three-class or, or whatever the model's going to be.
If it's not a, if it's not a three-class model. Then it'll create havoc on the schedule.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, dividing them in half seems to be the. This way to deal with that.
Somebody who, who's, who's done a lot of. Teaching folks semester schedule that our model is designed around, around the three, the three plus three. So it, it is now, the challenge to that, you, you know, you need to be aware of, there's going to be some challenges with that. Because there's some classes that. That AP classes, music classes, there's, there are some classes that. Are gonna not like that. That's the easiest way to say it. It's, it's, you're, you know, you're. If you're going that route, essentially the folks, I can tell you the folks that are going in, in that type of direction have said, look, we're in a pandemic. We have to get through this year as best we can. It's not perfect. You're, you're, it's going to be very difficult to, to, to make everyone happy in that type of a model, you know, the other model. The other problem, you know, the concerns usually are related to. Well, that means kids are going to be without a certain subject matter for quite a long period, like they could, they could be taking English, for example, at the beginning of. You know, the, the first, the nine weeks of school and not see English class again until August. I mean, there's, there's, there, there, there are pros and cons to, to all of that.
But when you look at that scattergram with all those Fs. Kids aren't, it's not happening for them anyway. They're failing. So to just give them three classes and they can really focus on them, I, you know, just like you saw in Geyserville and Roanoke Park. I would imagine the Fs would go down. And, you know, as far as the, the study skills or the ELD. That might have to happen in the afternoon for those kids to, to be there every day and take those study skills or ELD class. And figure it out that way.
So the, the other, the other thing that might complicate it is, at least at CASA and I don't know at Pebbleuma, they have. Pathways and they have cohorts of students that meet with. Their core classes and their electives. I'm just wondering, I don't know whether, but that might be something, Cliff, that. For your, your, your group to figure out too. Is that impacted by not having a six-period schedule?
Yeah.
And how? I don't know.
So the.
Would you, would you be able to change it so that, so let's say you have a English and history, just to say. And they share the same kids and they share curriculum. But it would be very difficult to split it, right? So that one was, if, if, let's say we did the three period. And they were doing it for the first six weeks, English, math and science. And so that history class was not part of that with that. I don't know whether that would impact their ability to teach together, their curriculum, how their kids would respond. I, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, we'd have to look at it.
Yeah, so the. So there's, I, I've, I've got three pieces that I've been able to, I, I think. Ascertain from some of the, from the comments. I want to make sure that one of them was just what we spoke about related to courses. The other was that we would start doing some work on developing out. Some potential opportunities for extracurricular, co-curricular. You know, at all of the school sites, K-12. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about? The schedule? Cliff, this one's for you. So I guess it was about the master schedule. I know that you had the counselors input different scenarios into Aries. Was the three-by-three one of them?
Well, so our, I mean, our schedule right now, if, if we did the second semester, all things being equal, we would just choose. Which are the three periods that are going to meet for half the second semester and then which are the other three? So we would literally just split our schedule in half. So let's say we did. First, second and third, we did A-days for the first half of the second semester. The schedule's already set, it's already been made. We would just tell Aries only first, second and third are meeting every day. And then that second half of the second semester, we would tell Aries now it's four, five, six. The, the question will be really is, we had the counselors set up three cohorts of every class. So if we're still going to go with three cohorts and not halves, right? That, that will affect the hybrid schedule. When we come back in person in hybrid, you know, how does that work? So. We may have to look at that. Do we stick with the three? Can we do two? You know, if the elementary, the elementary model can do two, but that's because they're only. Seeing one group, right? They're just taking the one class and splitting it exactly in half. But no, I, I don't see Aries being an issue because it's, that schedule wouldn't change. We would just tell it which periods are meeting. For which part of, of the semester.
So the. I want to get to the third item because I want to make sure that we've, we've got it. The first item was, was looking at a reduced model. Secondary, the second item was looking at specifically. Extracurricular and co-curricular. And then the third piece would be developing out. Small learning cohorts and specifically was. Special education, the ones that were presented tonight, which are the moderate, severe, preschool, full inclusion, special day. And the second piece was English learners, I heard. That would be, that, that would keep our plate pretty full. To be able to do, you know, because there's, there's going to be staffing implications for this and we'd have to work through and see what those, what those would be. Again, that would be, we would, we would be still working in the planning phase. Of putting it together and getting it ready for, for a rollout. We would have to come back and talk specifically around when, as it relates to small learning cohorts. Once we get it all in place, whether you are ready to deploy that, because by the time we, we. We may have additional information by that particular time, our climate may shift. Between the time we do, we, we plan this and the time we're ready to truly roll this out. And so we would have to come back, I think, to do that. Does that make sense?
What do you mean our climate would shift? You mean?
Our, could be our, our, you know, what happens with the, with in Sonoma County related to COVID rates.
Okay.
That type of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be that, you know, related to some challenges. You know, most of it would be related to external factors that are out of our control. Or we might have issues internally with some of our, our own learning groups. That might impact, you know, saying, it, saying the model's ready to go, but we're going to hold off for, for. A period of time to determine that, that, that when we're ready to. But we now know what the model is that we can start working off of. So that's the critical piece for us to move forward. Think, I mean, that's the information that we have for today. I don't know if there's anything else. We'll have more, obviously, when, as the groups come, as Cliff's able to come back and we can talk more specifically about. Some of the hybrid is relates, you know, what that would look, could look like. A non-distance or, or a distance learning in-person hybrid. And again, you know, you know, there's, when you say hybrid, it means something, something different from every district to district. In some districts, that means a half and half approach. In other districts, it means a one-class approach. It just, it's really heavily dependent on what their schedule looks like. And so I think that, that if we're giving, giving the. The, the committee a large, a large enough canvas to work within, I think will be really beneficial for them.
Yeah, I mean, the guidance I'm taking, and I'm gonna take back to the committee and correct me if I'm wrong, is that. That six courses, six classes, six groups of cohorts, mixing is too much, too many contacts, too many, too much mixing. So we need to be looking at smaller cohort mixing. Right? So whether that's three, whether that's two, whether that's one, whatever we look at. Is that correct?
Yes. Sounds like we've got a path.
Yeah, we do.
Which is wonderful.
Gary, what do we need? To prepare for Tuesday's board meeting? From this, from this meeting? Do you need, need assistance with that?
Will you? We probably should come up with a. Kind of a general guiding resolution on it.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you want to, if you could assist with that, that would be great. Just in general terms, recapturing the, 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 these three areas. Which is where we're kind of, it's strive to language.
I'll work with you on that.
We can have something that we can present to, to our, to our. To all of our stakeholders to say, you know, this is, this is work we're, you know. That kind of captures what we, we just covered in the last, especially what we talked about in the last fifteen minutes.
And we're going to get that, those lists to each site so they can kind of start figuring out what they may want to do or what would work for them?
Yeah, we're, well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to talk with, with, with principals, but we're also, you know, I think. I know it was mentioned, I believe Sheldon, you, you said it first. I think we really, we, we have a lot of. Parents, PTSAs, PTAs that are like that, that. Willing to help take a lead on a lot of this. So a lot of this, we're trying to, you know, the more that we can do that, that, that. Supports the kids, but I don't want our first read, you know, our, personally, I don't want our first response to be, well, what's the teacher gonna do? When it comes to these, the more that we can have other people stepping up to do some of those things. Now, co-curricular is co-curricular. But certainly the extracurricular stuff, if we can, we can, you know, the idea is to get, start getting kids more involved. We, even they can do that on distance, because like, for example, one of the things that was talked about was at the, at the. At this committee meeting, which seemed like a nothing thing, but it was, it was a really great idea, which was, he said, you know, we, we could even do trivia nights. You know, and that could be something that, that could be hosted by a student body group. You know, student leadership or by a parent that was willing to take that type of an activity on. And so. I think it's going to be kind of going through the, the master list that, that Sheldon put together of, of his notes. And sitting down by certain, by. High school, junior high and elementary and looking at that and seeing what opportunities are out there that we think that we could, we could, we could put in place. Okay?
Yeah, because I think that the community is jumping at the bit to help out. I think we would have no problems with that.
Yeah. I think, I think a lot of times we get into it and we, we, we sometimes can get so deep into the weeds of how we're going to do an activity, then rather list the activities we want, and then, then start talking about, well, who could help us with this?
And that's why I think getting that list to the, all the sites, they know their PTA, they know their booster club, they know their school site council. So it's really on, we can't micromanage that.
Right.
All right, are we done?
I think so.
Anything else before I declare this meeting over?
Ellen, you want to get this started on the?
Yeah, I just texted you, let's do it on a Google Doc, so we can share it back and forth.
And someone talked to me later about the ten, fifteen minutes I was gone, my wifi had a, um, medical episode.
Sure thing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, well, this was a great meeting, any other comment?
Thank you for everyone for tuning in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.